Thank you very much Kathleen, I appreciate it. Public comment will be limited to items on the special agenda tonight, okay? So, I guess we're just going to move forward here.
Do I have public comment?
Well, it is public comment, is on the item tonight. Correct? Do I have that right? Okay, just reading what it says here. All right, let's go to our first and only item then. It is zoning text amendment number 17-003, an amendment to the Malibu Municipal Code Title 17, regulating formula retail stores citywide. Can I have a report please?
Good evening Commissioners. We are pleased to bring you tonight a new formula retail ordinance for your consideration for recommendation to the city council. I'm just going to go briefly over some of the high points of the ordinance so we can get to public comments and your comments and recommendations. Alex, if you could put up the PowerPoint. There we go. So, this ordinance would apply citywide. It would involve some differences from Measure R, addressing some of the legal challenges involved with Measure R. This ordinance would be implemented with a ministerial formula retail clearance. And what that means is that someone who wants to open a new formula retail business would need to apply to the city for a clearance that would be processed by staff probably within a few days. We are possibly over the counter if it's very easy to verify the information that's been provided. The ordinance would, like Measure R, involve a 2,500 square foot cap on the size of a new or enlarged formula retail business. It would allow for up to 3,500 square feet of gross floor area if the applicant demonstrated that at least half of the goods and services were unique to Malibu. So that's kind of a bonus provision where if the business were going to be something unique to Malibu, it could be larger. The formula retail definition in the draft ordinance, like Measure R, a plot would be for 10 or more businesses in the world. And then, it would also involve a 30% cap for non-exempt formula retail in a shopping center and a 30% cap on formula retail tenant spaces. And then, something that Measure R did not involve was this additional requirement for approval of a formula retail clearance where it would not, a clearance would not be approved if a business that was not in a shopping center was going to be within 500 feet of a non-exempt business. There is an exemption carved out for legally established formula retail businesses that were in business prior to November 1st, 2017. They would be exempt from the requirement to get a formula retail clearance until they expanded, relocated, or ceased operations. These businesses would not be considered non-exempt for purposes of the 30% calculation however. And the final point I wanted to mention is that the formula retail clearance would be transferable to a new business in the exact same tenant space, in the same category of use. The example in the staff report that was used was one chain coffee place to another chain coffee place, for example. There is one change that staff wanted to recommend to the ordinance, and that is the one, it's something I mentioned just a minute ago. So, under the applicability section, these categories are basically the same as Measure R, except for number nine, which is the legally established formula retail businesses that would be exempt from the clearance. Staff's recommended change would add this sentence, that this category of exemption is not non-exempt formula retail for purposes of the 30% calculation and the 500-foot calculation. So that is one change that staff would be recommending. And so, I'll just conclude with that and we'll take any questions you have or we can get on with public comment. Unless Trevor, is there anything you wanted to add? At this point, okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to ask that we hold on our questions at this point and open up the public comment and kind of get everyone's input before we start asking questions. Is that, is that okay with everyone?
I just have one question.
So that's, that's a no then? That would be a no?
No, it's just, it's a procedural. Usually we do disclosures, and my question to Trevor is, this is a ordinance, so we don't do disclosures?
That's correct.
I knew that.
I learned that.
Okay, so we're okay with going, okay, all right. So if you want to speak and you haven't filled out a slip, please come see Kathleen and fill out a slip, and we'll get going. Our first speaker tonight is Paul Grisante, followed by Marshall Camp and his group.
Greetings Chair and Commissioners and staff of the City of Malibu. I got to admit, I'm thrown by the recommended change. I don't understand what it means, and I haven't had a chance to look at what it could possibly mean, and I'm hoping that perhaps later someone can elucidate what this means and what it's going to mean for their calculations. As I read through this, I had several questions. First is, how is a formula retail clearance obtained? What's it going to cost somebody to get it? And how long will it take to get a decision? And I appreciate that you said maybe in a couple days, which is great. I was also interested that standalone formula retail businesses cannot be located within 500 feet of another formula retail business. What is the reason for that? Is there an example of such a concentration anywhere in the city, in an area that's outside of a shopping center? On page four of five, we see the words, "The 30% cap would be calculated based on the gross floor area and on the number of leasable tenant spaces." What does this mean? Is this a dual test with 30% of the square footage and no more than three out of 10 eligible spaces regardless of square feet? Could this result in three small spaces that use less than 30% of the square footage using up the allocation for the entire 10-space center? Square footage alone is a much easier to understand test. As I look around the room here, my other question is, were the owners of all appropriately zoned retail spaces and their tenants notified of tonight's meeting? If not, why not? It's not that hard to figure out what we have in Malibu that's zoned retail. The ordinance includes a thousand-square-foot bonus for businesses who stock 50% or more of merchandise that is only available in Malibu. Is a percentage based on the number of the items in the store or the retail value of the items in the store? Doesn't this ordinance in general still violate the principle that use permits run with the land? Another question, doesn't this formula retail ordinance still contain arbitrary standards that are vulnerable to a challenge on substantive due process grounds? Ten in the whole world is pretty random, and two out of seven speakers is also pretty random. Isn't this formula retail ordinance still vulnerable to challenge on equal protection grounds? Aren't we giving special regulatory treatment here? And nine, have you considered that the floor area limitations and 30% cap may result in increased retail vacancies all over Malibu? Thank you.
Thank you Paul. Next.
Can we flip this speaker off on the screen?
Put what up?
So the video of the speaker rather than...
Oh, sure.
Oh. I can't, but...
I think it's been done now.
Well...
So do you want it up there?
These two right here.
Okay, Alex...
We can see ourselves.
Alex, if you could put the podium on when the speakers come up.
Okay, next up we have Marshall Camp, and he's got Evan Gordon and Richard Leichtenstein with him, so he gets five minutes. And I saw Evan, where's Richard? There you are, okay, great.
Good evening Commissioners and staff. My name is Marshall Camp. As my guest from the Thai, I'm an attorney. I'm a partner of the law firm Houston Henigan, and I was the lead lawyer for plaintiffs in the Measure R litigation. I'm here tonight to deliver a pretty simple message, which is that Malibu, in our view, can do more united than it can divided. I've reviewed the draft ordinance, and I commend the city attorney and the staff on the hard work that's obviously gone into it. And I'm not here to provide any sort of legal analysis of the specific proposal or to raise specific issues, but I want to say generally, and make it clear, that in our view, there is no formula retail ordinance like this, of this kind, that can be immune or impervious to legal challenge. These sorts of ordinances exist necessarily, as it is right now, in a legal gray zone. As far as I'm aware, there are only two published appellate court cases considering formula retail ordinances on the merits. In both of those, the ordinances were invalidated, they were held unlawful. One in Florida federal court, and now with Measure R, one in California state court. I know there's been some talk about another case in Coronado about 15 years ago. It's true that the California Court of Appeal in that case rejected a challenge to a formula retail ordinance. That was a very different case and a very narrow case. The ordinance there did not cap formula retail. Part of the basis of the decision was in fact that there was no evidence the ordinance would result in any permit ever being denied. It did not address the issues that we raised and were the basis for the Court of Appeal decision on Measure R, and that in our view, call into great question the ability to regulate formula retail as a distinct category of use, as this ordinance and its predecessors would do. And third, that Coronado decision was unpublished, it's not authority in California courts. The bottom line is that there's no ordinance, sorry, there's no case you can look at out there in which an ordinance like this was upheld. There's no magic bullet, there's no secret sauce, there's no formula you can look to, no court case you can look to to say, aha, that's the way to do essentially this, but in a legal way. In our view, the best way for a new ordinance to succeed, to actually make a difference for Malibu's future, is for it not to be challenged in the first place. Now, the clients we represented in the Measure R litigation are members of this community, as you know, and they care deeply about its future. I urge the commission and the council to work with all stakeholders, property owners, residents, everyone, to try to fashion an ordinance that has broad-based support. It's not going to be, I suspect, anyone's idea of perfect, but it might be everybody's idea of acceptable. In other words, and please don't tell my partners I said this in public, I'm asking you to put me and lawyers like me out of the business of challenging Malibu formula retail ordinances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, Steve Soboroff, followed by Matt Ogden.
Planning Commissioners, staff, city, Malibu, my name's Steve Soboroff. I've been a part of the community since I purchased the Malibu Creek Plaza in 1988 from Tom Selick and Harrison Ford. That shopping center is now known as Malibu Village. Some of my best memories are from right here in Malibu, working with local leaders, working with local residents, working with local schools, and of course being with local businesses. European Shoe Repair, Colony Cleaners, Malibu, Guido's, Dr. Rose Pet Store, Diesel Bookstore, Malibu Eye Center, Ballet Studio, La Scala Malibu, Jim Rapp Realtors, Deans, Greg Ruth Jewelers, Malibu Rugs, Malibu Special. That's why I'm still here after all these years. I know we're here tonight to talk about formula retail, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention how sad it was to see the movie theater leave. I warned you. Keeping the movie theater was a high priority of mine. I subsidized the rent there for years. It wasn't easy, but we made it work. And then we charged some other tenants a little more so we could make our mortgage payments. It was a model that worked for us back then, and unfortunately, the theater's now gone. But that model is still the one we use today and the one we will use at Whole Foods in the park, which I'm happy to say is moving forward under construction. With Whole Foods as our anchor tenant, we welcome local businesses opening in Malibu to call me. We want them to be part of this project. The small format Whole Foods will be built inside of a new public park with 160 new trees, an orchard of 80 California sycamores. The store will be custom designed and merchandised for Malibu. It's going to be spectacular. We're working with nonprofit chains inspiration to build a playground, state-of-the-art inclusive playground for all children, including those with special needs, 200 of whom live in Malibu and have no place to play. We've also partnered with Elon Musk nonprofit, the kitchen community, his brother, to serve schools and outdoor classrooms and connect kids to organic food that empowers them. Our playground will be dedicated to first responders, honoring our sheriffs, firefighters, ambulance drivers. Again, I'm speaking to locals when I say if you want to open a business and I haven't spoken to you first, call me. So tonight, you're going to discuss a formula new retail ordinance. I've read it, I'm sure a lot of people have read it, it ain't perfect, but we're here to listen, and we're to work with you to make something work. If it goes to court, it won't live. None ever have, so let's work together. In the end, a healthy community needs a diverse mix of tenants. Without this balance, it doesn't work for anybody. We've done it before in Malibu, and we're going to do it again very soon. We've done it before in Malibu, and we're going to do it again very soon, and it's going to be special. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Matt Ogden, followed by Jim Arnon.
Good evening, Chair Pearson, Commissioners. So I remember this all started, actually, in 2013. By the way, my name is Matt Ogden. I'm president of the Malibu Association of Realtors. I was also president in 2013 when this came to life first, and it didn't happen, and then Measure R came, and it didn't happen either. So after reading this current proposed format of it, again, when I brought concerns in 2013, the same concerns are brought up, which is just, and everyone's kind of saying it, is the legality of it. I was born and raised in Malibu and understand the appreciation for creating and keeping Malibu like we're at, but I'm frustrated that the city of Malibu doesn't pass something that's going to withstand legal challenge, and we're just going to continue spending money, cities' money, taxpayers' money, to try and defend something that has been said I don't think can get through the courts. One big thing is, you know, Measure R was invalidated on the ground that it violated the state law principle that permits run, the use permits run with the land. So the FRC ordinance proposed now would limit the transfer of formula retail clearances, and that basically violates the same state principle. It's said even in the staff report that the way these permits can be transferred is if, let's say, a coffee bean tea leaf is there, but then a Pete's Coffee wants to come in place, that can be transferred that way. But that's exactly why the state ruled down Measure R. So I just, I think it might be wise for everyone to consider going back and reviewing this, maybe with a land use firm, or like other people have said, getting the shareholders of the city and everyone, the landowners together to really think about the best way to get this done. There's, again, there's arbitrary standards of how this, between square footage, the 10 number of what's creating formula retail, and that's substantive challenge on substantive due process grounds. The last thing, too, is, you know, as these shopping centers get sold and people are coming in paying crazy prices for these centers, they need to, obviously, try and get their investment back. If this passes, I think there's no doubt we'll be seeing more vacancies. And, you know, from working right across from the Colony Shopping Center, it's getting a little bit irksome to me of seeing thousands of square feet that's been vacant for years. So again, I just want you to think about reviewing this and making sure it can pass legal grounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Jim Arnon, followed by Pat Healy.
Good evening. I'm Jim Arnoni. I'm a partner with the law firm of Latham &amp; Watkins. I represent the Malibu Development Company, the new owner of the La Paz Ranch site. I submitted a letter, so I think you have that. I'm not going to repeat everything in the letter, but I wanted to hit a couple of points in keeping with the idea that I think we all have a shared goal of making sure that unique, successful places for the community to gather, to dine, and to shop is what our shared goal is. I'm hoping that you will consider looking at the definition of formula retail and looking at some lack of clarity. Item six in the definition refers to standardized signage, a service mark, or trademark. I think that term is open to a great deal of confusion and is not clear on its face. I would urge you to consider clarifying it. I think the way it should be clarified is by deleting it, actually, because it either seems to apply to trademarks, which is already covered by a standardized array of merchandise, or it seems to apply to the look of a place, which is already covered by standardized color schemes, standardized decor, standardized facade, and standardized layout, which are your other factors. What I think we need to avoid, and the way it could be read right now, is that item six, standardized signage, a service mark, or trademark, means the exact same thing as a standardized array of merchandise. So if you're one, you're automatically two, and automatically, therefore, trigger it. I would urge you to consider simply deleting that. If you're not so inclined to delete it, I would very much urge that you at least clarify that what I think its intent was, was to apply to exterior signage, not, for example, if you sell a product inside the label on the product that has a trademark. That is part of being a standardized array of merchandise, so I don't think you would expect that to count twice. Also, when you talk about having 10 or more, the current language says 10 or more establishments in the world. I would posit that the world is a rather large place, that if you want a differentiation and not sameness kind of experience, you don't have to go to the entire world. If there's something in Prague, Paris, Berlin, London, South Beach, the fact that, and a couple other places, the fact that there's one here does not create a sense of sameness and excessive familiarity that I think we would all label as a chain store. I would think you could look to the county, maybe the adjacent county, and you could achieve that goal without being unnecessarily restrictive. I also think the size that we're talking about is simply too small. I don't think you can have, especially for food service establishments, anything near that size that doesn't result in just forcing people to have fast food only. You're not going to want to compel fast food only. Since you're not going to want to compel that, I would urge you to increase the size. Lastly, I just wanted to point out that I think the slide that I saw said something different than I read in the text. In the text, it talks about 30% of the total gross floor area of a shopping center. I think in the slide I read, it went by quickly, 30% of the non-exempt space of a shopping center. Those are very different, and I would urge you to stick with the language that I read in the ordinance and not what I saw on the slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Pat Healy, followed by Jay Flor Katz.
I just have a couple of comments. I want to commend you, the ordinance and limiting the size of retail stores. I think if anything's too large, it'll destroy the small-town feeling of our city, and many cities have no chain stores at all. I think Ojai is an example of that. So I don't quite understand what's going on right now with all of the threats of lawsuits and things like that, but I'll leave that up to the city attorney. I would ask that the following be added to the ordinance, quote, "Notwithstanding anything to the contrary herein, total formula retail exempt and non-exempt shall not exceed in the aggregate 30% of the gross square footage of the shopping center." Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Jay Flor Katz, and you have an extra minute from Drew Anne.
Hi, everybody. You know how much I love speaking in public. I just find it really ironic that the lawyers come up and they say, it would be great if we all worked together, but we're going to sue you. Welcome to Malibu. This is how it's been. We've been trying to get a formula ordinance here for going on a decade. We've been working nonstop since 2011, when Ojai and 70 other cities passed them within months. We're seven years along. It's been a lot of fun, and you've seen Malibu change into a ghost town of retail. The citizens have flown, fled our retail centers. They don't want to come there. They don't want to shop there, and the chain stores have done us a lot of harm. This is a very standard ordinance. I've studied about 60 of them. I think Christie did a very good job, and I think she's, we've all learned a lot in the process. The ordinance that was in Measure R was written by the staff and by Christie, and I think the court showed us a clear direction, and I think she followed it, which is really great. I spent this weekend up in Ventura and in Ojai, on Main Street in Ventura and Ojai. Seven o'clock at night, vibrant, filled with residents, filled with visitors. I didn't, the only chain store I saw on Main Street was Starbucks. You know, 10s, 20s, 30s, 40s, mom-and-pops, all unique, art galleries, filled with people, as opposed to Malibu, walk outside, a ghost town. The same goes for Ojai, who passed their ordinance over a decade ago, the formula ordinance, and they are a thriving downtown area, and their real estate is thriving and their prices are rising. Preserve Malibu tried to save Malibu. In 2011, we started when all of our mom-and-pops were being evicted. We saved four and more stores. One was Trankas Nursery, Sea Lily, Drill, and Levon Shoe Repair. Those businesses today are still here, and they also are thriving. And it's kind of sad when you look at Vintage Market and how they, you know, they threatened, it was a very difficult process. They kicked the nursery aside, and they bulldozed, and they destroyed the magic of that nursery. It's still there, half the size, and all that land that they destroyed and the buildings they built are empty still. So we did a lot of good work, and we ended up going to a ballot. A ballot is not off the table. A ballot can be done again very easily. We've learned a lot. And here's the main thing, you know, at one point, an opponent said, the preservationists in Malibu have never won an election. Well, since then, we've won five. We've won every single election this city has had. The voice of the residents is crystal clear. There's no denying it. We all know it. They want this town protected. They want the mission statement upheld, and they want a unique, preserved town. They want the character of Malibu back. I think she did a good job. I think there's a few things you can change, make it a little stronger, but if you read all the other ordinances in this country, it's very close, and I think it's really good, and those ordinances have been effective. Not one city has gotten rid of their ordinance. They've only strengthened them, so keep that in mind. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Kian Schulman, followed by Norm Haney.
The citizens of Malibu have already spoken of what they want with the success of Measure R vote. We lost many of our small businesses due to increase in rent. Our small town has lost its charm due to a chain store invasion. Please stay as close to Measure R perimeters as possible. Thank you very much. Give us our hometown back.
Thank you. Norm Haney, followed by Blake Pomeroy.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I just have a few questions. One has to do with the 500-foot distance. It seems to me like if you had, let's say you had a Starbucks within 500 feet of your building, does that mean that you can't have a formula retail in your building because within 500 feet you have a Starbucks? That doesn't seem quite fair to me. Also, a second thing, if you have a 2,700-square-foot building, inside wall to inside wall, and 2,500, you're limited to 2,500 to retail, formula retail, what are you going to do with the other 200 square feet? I mean, it would be very difficult to find a tenant for 200 square feet in a retail So I'm, and I'm wondering, does Starbucks count as retail? Is that, is that a bad retail market? I mean, is that, we have a lot of Starbucks, and people seem to enjoy it and like it. So I'm a little concerned about how it's defined. And last but not least, Commissioner Jennings brought this up before, and I'm not sure it goes exactly like this, but let's say that in Switzerland, they came up with a brand-new kind of chocolate, and it was unbelievably fantastic, and they had 11 stores in Switzerland. Does that mean that Malibu is going to be deprived from having, that being called a retail store here in Malibu, a formula retail store, when it doesn't even exist in the United States? It seems, it seems a little harsh. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Norm.
And your service.
Thanks. Blake Pomeroy, followed by Ann Dohin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Blake Pomeroy. I represent the Malibu Country Mart. I do some of the leasing and management for them. We have worked with you guys and the city of Malibu within the confines of Measure R. We've always prided ourselves on trying to manage our center in such a way as to stay with underneath the 30% cap, which is why, under the Measure R, we were able to add Ted Baker at the time, and you guys were very complimentary of the transparency that we displayed, and so we appreciate that, and we'd like to continue working with you guys under, you know, whatever new restrictions that you'd like to place. However, in general, we do feel that too many restrictions, especially in today's marketplace, is going to be negative, both on us and the community, just because it inhibits our ability to fill vacancies and serve the Malibu marketplace. As you know, retail is changing very rapidly. The internet is wiping out entire business sectors, and placing additional restrictions on our ability to lease to different tenants would inevitably lead to more vacancies, more pop-up stores, and less permanent tenants, so we see that as a negative. Also, touching on something that several other people have mentioned, the 10 stores worldwide seems very restrictive to us. There have been instances where I have found tenants that, you know, might have 10 locations in Europe or 10 locations in Asia, and it would require, you know, a 14, 15, 17-hour plane ride in order to shop at one of those locations, yet it would still be considered not unique enough for Malibu, and I feel it, and we feel that that might be a little bit too restrictive. Beyond that, we feel that there might be the need for an appeal process. Inevitably, there will be a tenant that the community really likes that won't be able to get a clearance, and there should be a process in place in order to allow that to be addressed. And lastly, I believe, as this ordinance is written, it goes into effect November 1st of this year, and we feel that it should probably go into effect once it's passed by Council. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ann, followed by Joel Schulman. Oh, never mind. Support.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for letting us speak to you on this topic. Very important topic. One of the reasons, aside from being born here, that I've always loved Malibu, is that it's so distinct and so different from every other seaside community that is in Southern California and Northern California. People come here because it's distinct and because it's different. We don't want San Fernando Valley by the sea or Redondo Beach north. We want Malibu. We want our people. We want our own unique charm. One of the things also that I wanted to emphasize is that we did pass Measure R 60, roughly 60 to 40%, and that means that that's the kind of community that the people want. And I really feel that if something along the lines of Measure R isn't put forward by the Council, that the people will feel betrayed. There are lots of good things in that, and there's only one major thing that the court singled out as being illegal, and so if that could just be tweaked. The rest of this ordinance is pretty darn good. Also, everybody's been commenting about the empty stores near Ralph's, and there are, beyond that, there are other empty storefronts. And it, I, the last speaker emphasized the internet, but the internet is part of the reason why chain stores are empty. There is, people are abandoning shopping in stores at an alarming rate. I'm one of them. Why would I go out and drive when I can get the same thing through the mail in two days? And you can't necessarily get the same thing in mom-and-pop stores. It's a... It's important that our own people, our own merchants are allowed to prosper and flourish in their own community. Let me see, I found out about this late, so I didn't really prepare remarks. Also, we would appreciate it if you could keep the provisions limiting the standardization. I did hear another speaker talk about that earlier today. And the way it was phrased in Measure R really does protect against too many chains coming in. It's not that we were going to eliminate chains altogether. There were, a number of chains were allowed to come in. So, we're not wiping them out, but just limiting them so that they don't take over. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Stephen Hakim, followed by Lynn Norton.
Hi, my name is Stephen Hakim. I'm a commercial property owner in Malibu. And I've written down a few concerns regarding the ordinance as proposed that I would like to address. First and foremost, I believe all such restrictions for formula retail should be limited to properties over 10,000 square feet. This causes a great deal of competitive advantage to other small property owners who have existing formula retail tenants. Many landlords have paid a great deal for properties as well as planned developments based on Measure R and other variations of such formula retail ordinances throughout the years. And this ordinance is a completely different proposition. Not to mention, it creates an enormous amount of additional time and resources for staff to have this additional layer of screening for these smaller buildings under 10,000 square feet. Secondly, I believe that 2,500 square feet for a retail store is extremely small. If the store happens to be larger, then I think they should at least have the ability to get a CUP, which was, I believe, what was laid out in Measure R, rather than automatically just getting rejected because they happen to be over 2,500 square feet. Thirdly, being within 500 feet of another formula retail store should have no bearing. There are so many properties that have been formula retail for so many years, such as Jack in the Box, McDonald's, and more. And this gives an unfair advantage, again, for property owners to capture market rents, especially the ones which are less than 10,000 square feet, as they don't have the various anchor tenants spread across thousands of square feet within their malls. We own a multitude of buildings in Malibu and have always strived to keep mom-and-pops in those buildings. But at the end of the day, Malibu is a difficult climate for businesses and, you know, sometimes, inevitably, it just ends up being that formula retail are those tenants which are able to afford the rent. So, I just feel that, again, making it limited to these smaller buildings makes it extremely difficult because, you know, we don't want to have more vacancies in Malibu. And at the end of the day, we want to all be able to give Malibu the amenities that they deserve, rather than vacancies, because as they've addressed, you know, with online and such, it's becoming much more difficult to fill the stores. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephen.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just have two small points. One is that I'm in favor of the ordinance generally. There was a definition of shopping center that ended with saying it was under common management. And I just wondered if possibly that could create a future loophole where the property owner restructures it so that it's not under property, common management, and then it doesn't even fit the definition of what is, you know, subject to the ordinance. And then, it says that in order to get the CUP, issuing the clear, issuing the CUP will not result in non-exempt formula retail establishments occupying more than 30% of the total gross floor area. And I think that non-exempt should be just taken out of there. Because I think if I understand that we exempt things because if there's a Ralph's Grocery Store, that might just be the whole shopping center. It's a Ralph's and nothing else, so you can't limit it to 30%. But once you've already got a whole bunch of non-exempt stores filling up 70% of the shopping center, then you don't, then you can, the rest of the 30% should still be, you don't want to fill it with non-exempt, I'm sorry, with, yeah, not, did you get what I'm saying? Just strike the word "non-exempt" out of there.
It's a tongue twister.
Do the math. Thanks.
Thank you, Lynn. Would anyone else like to address us on this issue? Anybody, anybody? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we're back up here. Mr. Mazza, do you want to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak. Several times before, we've gone through this sequentially and I've found it easier. So, I'm going to make a motion. And we can discuss each item and change it if we have to after I make the motion. And my purpose is to keep this as close to Measure R as possible without obviously affecting the legal status. And as a matter of disclosure, which I don't have to make, I did discuss all of these items with our city attorney this afternoon. And none of them were of concern to her as causing a problem. So, my first...
What, hang on, you were asking for consensus on something?
No, I'm going to make the motion.
Okay.
And then, we will discuss each item if we need to. Okay, the first part of the motion is, I want to change on Section 4.2A on pages five and through seven, I want to change the definition of shopping center to the definition in Measure R. And I've handed you all a copy of that definition. It's kind of a scribbly page. I'll read it.
It's a totally scribbly page.
I've eliminated everything else. But this is, this is the definition of shopping center for Measure R, which 60% of people voted for.
Can you zero me in? You know where you're going. Can you tell me where you're at?
It's referencing shopping center.
It's right here.
And back here, it's referencing where?
It's referencing pages, page five.
Page five.
Let me find it.
Well, five has shopping center defined.
Five has shopping center defined...
Oh, I see it.
Right there, okay?
Thank you.
Replacing that definition with the definition in Measure R, which says, "Shopping center means a group of retail, retail service, and other commercial establishments operating under common management and having at least 10,000 square feet of gross floor area. Shopping centers that occupy more than one legal parcel will be evaluated for conformance with this section on a per parcel basis, even where the whole of the shopping center is under common management. No differentiation shall be made between centers that are product-oriented or service-oriented." This dash, and then I'm adding this because this is what's in Christie's staff report. "This definition is for purposes of Chapter 17.61 only." Okay, that's the first part. The second part is formula retail clearance, which is on page six. And in that case, I would delete paragraph B and replace it with the language from Measure R. And that language is, "Approval of a proposed formula retail establishment will not result in formula retail establishments occupying more than 30% of (a) the overall square footage area," and I'm re-striking of service area because it's a different term than used in the rest of the paragraph, "of each floor of the shopping center. (b) the number of feasible, leasable tenants, spaces for each floor of the shopping center. And (c) total gross floor area of the parcel or shopping center. The calculation of the 30% limit shall pursuant to this paragraph shall include the proposed formula establishment and all existing retail establishments, including formula retail establishments described in paragraph 1 through 9." I've changed 10 to 9 because there's only nine listed in the staff report, in Section Okay, and then, number three, formula retail clearance. And that's Section 1761.030, which is the same section. I want to add at the end of the paragraph, and this is...
Which paragraph?
Okay, the C.
Okay, I got it.
Now, the reason I'm doing this language, just so you understand, is if, if you have a retail establishment that's not in a shopping center, that's near a shopping center, for example, the stores on Cross Creek, I mean, on Malibu Road, or the stores across the street from the Doom Shopping Center, you would not be able to have formula retail. And that gives a monopoly to the shopping centers, as one of the speakers mentioned. So, I want to add to the end of that, in fairness, the words "not located in a shopping center," which means you are 500 feet from a formula retail store that's not in a shopping center, if you understand that. If anybody has any questions on that, I can explain it. That would mean that every, you know, you could be 500 feet apart without worrying about, without worrying the fact that Rip Curl's in a shopping center that's across the street from another small retail that isn't covered. Okay, that's three. Number four, in the same section, I want to add D. "All formula retail clearances approved by the planning director shall be noticed and reported to the planning commission within 30 days of issuance. Such reports shall include all calculations and descriptions of businesses used that were used in making such determination." This adds some public transparency. It is not making it a decision of the shopping, of the planning commission. I have cleared that language with the city attorney. Am I missing one? And that is my motion.
I would say, I just want to comment that, especially at first, you may have said the most brilliant things ever. It was really hard to keep up.
Okay, well, we can go through each one.
I, well, yeah, because you already know it. And I got this scribbly page here and it's just, like I said, it could be, it was a little challenging for me to keep up, to be honest. And like I said, it could have been brilliant. I have no idea.
Let me second it for discussion.
Okay, would you like to ask questions about each one of them? And we can discuss each one of them?
Well, I have a question. The city attorney modified the language in drafting this. They chose to use other language than the language had been, that had been used in Measure R, which you're now, by this motion, attempting to shoehorn back in. And I would just like to know what the reason was. I mean, was it just a random toss of the dice that they chose other language? Or is there a difference that, the reason why they chose the language they chose?
I can't answer for the city attorney. Maybe the assistant city attorney could tell you. But I did check the specific language with the other city attorney and none of it, according to her, violates or puts in jeopardy the law. Now, I did want to amend my motion because I did...
Can we, can we ask, get a, maybe an opinion over here?
Sure. From Trevor? Okay. The purpose, the changes that were made to these definitions were meant to simplify the definition and make it easily applicable. It's also done with input from the planning department. Some of the items included were difficult to calculate. There aren't ways to calculate service area for some of the categories of uses in the And then, the definition of shopping center was also done with planning department input. If you want to talk more about that, Bonnie, in terms of being, trying to find a manageable way to define what a shopping center is, that was the reasoning behind those changes in the definitions.
Okay, I have a second question. You want to change that language that staff came up with. What, what do you gain? What does the city gain by, by changing that language other than faithfulness to Measure R?
The city gains what Measure R intended to do. For example, the way the calculation of the 30% is made, most of the shopping centers under that definition are 100% exempt in a lot of cases. For example, if we took Whole Foods. Whole Foods is about, you know, 35,000 square feet or so. And 24,000 of that is exempt. It's a, it's a market. If the owner of that added another exempt use, like a bank, that's another 5,000 or 6,000 square feet, then 100% of that shopping center would be exempt. In the city's language, that's the way it would come out. In the Measure R language, it would be based on 30% of the non-exempt. And that's the difference in that language. And it's a substantial difference, but it's the intent of Measure R to limit formula retail. And the city, the language in the staff report essentially, in a lot of cases, negates the whole ordinance.
Let me, let me say it back to you in my layman's language here, since I was unable to really follow your first couple of points. But let's go back to your point one, because I couldn't write it all down as you went.
Okay.
Can you detail what you're after there in point one for me?
Okay. In that case, what this does is it adds more language, making it, making it per, per parcel. In other words, there's certain parts, certain shopping centers, for example, the Country Mart, which are actually three shopping centers put together. Okay, the, when Measure R was written, that was specifically addressed by this language so that all of the formula retail wouldn't be put in one building, that they would be spread out. That's the difference between this language and the other language.
So, the staff's language would allow grouping of formula retails, what you're saying?
They're silent to, if you, you know, if you could do that, if you could group them all into one building.
Okay. Is there a reason that was avoided that you know of, Trevor? Bonnie?
Yeah, we, we worked with the city attorney's office on the definition of a shopping center, in part based on some of the discussions we had. We only had two, as you recall, formula retail CUPs come before you. And so, and then in some of the discussions related to that, we wanted to clarify that the shopping center could be on multiple parcels, but it needed to be part of an overall complex, that it was, and under common management. I think Commissioner Mazza, you brought up in one case, the Malibu Colony Plaza, and your, your question was whether the Chevron gas station, which is under some similar ownership, but a different management scheme than the Colony Plaza, whether that should be considered. I think we were looking at the CUP for the Chevron station. So, we wanted to try to make that distinction, that we're talking about things that are under a common management scheme and simplify the calculation so that it didn't have to be done on a parcel-by-parcel or a floor-by-floor basis, just because that, it gets complicated and it's, it's difficult to track, things like that. So, that's, that's where we were headed with that. So that's, that's where we were headed with that. In addition, it's also kind of a balancing mechanism to give the city the protections it's looking for about chain stores in general, and also not be overly burdensome to the property owners who are, um, as we've heard, struggling with tenants and things like that. And if you have to manage where every single tenant goes, in addition to just getting a tenant, then that, that gets difficult for them.
Well, I, I'll tell you the truth, I don't remember the gas station coming up. We gave them a separate CDP without ever knowing that they were owned by the village or whatever it's called. I don't believe they are, but this is the purpose for this language in Measure R. It was very well thought out, uh, in far as I'm concerned, um, and studied. Now, uh, do you have any other more questions?
Yeah, I, I also, just to be honest, I had trouble keeping up with your second point, too. I just, there was a lot of language there, a lot of, it was, and you're reading it, I-
Okay, the second point is very, the second point is the point I just talked about, where if you say, we're only going to take the thirty percent on the stuff that is, the way it's written now, if you, if you have a formula retail there, even though it's over thirty percent, and you have an exempt formula retail, bank, uh, theater, whatever, and that makes up seventy percent of your property, then you are a hundred percent exempt from the law. And that's not the purpose of this law, or this ordinance. And that, those are just mathematical numbers. And the purpose was to say that thirty percent of Malibu's commercial in shopping centers can be formula retail, not a hundred percent.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Trevor, I'd, I'd love a, an opinion on that, just trying to get my head around all this.
Sure, I mean, it's a policy choice for the planning commission, you know, um, how much you want to decrease. The categories for the exempt provision, sorry, the exempt categories are generally things that aren't available except as a chain. There aren't very many banks out there, grocery stores, um, movie theaters, things like that. So, that is, that those are items that have to be done as a chain, as a chain store, and then the remaining space would be limited to thirty percent, um, of these non-exempt categories.
I want to make it clear, those are still exempt.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you could still have a, you could still have a mall, you're saying, that would be all exempt formula retail.
Correct.
Movie theaters and-
Correct, it's just what's left over after you've done the exempt uses, not the exempt uses. You can make a shopping center more than thirty percent if you're using exempt formula retail. We're just trying to carve out what's left. Yeah, did you understand that one?
Yeah, I totally understand that one. Can, can we go over your third point? Because this one I thought was interesting, too. And I was wondering about unintended consequences, the five hundred foot.
Okay, the five-
And I, I think it's an interesting one, because I was picturing, I was trying to think of the what-ifs on that one, and you, I think you came up with a good one, you know, there's pre-existing McDonald's and stuff like that, and they're spread out, then it just wipes out any ability for other buildings to possibly ever get a tenant.
Well, the reason I added the language, this language was written by the staff. It wasn't in Measure R. Measure R only covered shopping centers. So, you know, I'm a Measure R guy, essentially, but I'm deferring to staff on this. The only thing I want to say is that I do not believe, the reason I added "not located in a shopping center" is because I don't think it's fair for shopping centers to have monopoly. And we have several shopping centers that are adjacent to commercial buildings that aren't in the shopping center. So this allows those buildings to be part of that five hundred feet instead of just totally wiped out.
Let me ask you, the, the thing I was thinking about, I'm just curious your take on it. So, looking at, let's say, Jack in the Box and McDonald's. So that's probably about a thousand feet between them, I'm going to guess, somewhere around that. So, both sides of the highway, none, no formula would be considered in there? Do you have any comment on that?
Well, I, I guess we should have staff comment. I, I think personally that, I'm, I'm deferring to staff on this because this is something new. I didn't want to change their proposals too much, I just want to try to make them more fair. Staff decided that, yes, it should be citywide and it should cover more than shopping centers. If we disagree with staff, I mean, if you guys feel strongly that we shouldn't regulate what's up and down the highway, uh-
I'm just worried about if, if we've got the unintended consequences figured out here, you know, and I don't, I don't know if we do or not. It's, uh, I was not, I was surprised to see that. It made, made my head try and think of different areas of Malibu and how that actuates, you know, because five hundred feet means it'll cover, obviously, both sides of every road, and probably down certain streets, and you start to wonder, I don't know. I mean, maybe it's the perfect rule, I just-
John, is, is it fair to say you would know heartburn if that was not there?
There's no heartburn if that's not there, except, I do agree with staff, I think maybe we'd be better off, if you have heartburn, changing the, the number of feet, because I don't think we want to force a bunch of fast food Taco Bells onto Coast Highway, um, as part of the image of Malibu. So, there is some reason staff said, let's cover the other commercial in town. So, I, I-
Have we asked staff the reason?
Well, that's what I'm, was trying to do.
Sure, the purpose there is to be consistent, you know, the purpose of this, of this measure is to limit the impact of formula retail, and just limiting it in shopping centers would allow them proliferate independently, um, without limitation. The, the change makes sense, it's proposed by Commissioner Mazza, um, in terms of otherwise you would limit any freestanding formula retail within a distance of a shopping center, would give them exclusive ability to sort of control that area. But that's the purpose of it, is that we want to have a consistent ordinance that's easy to enforce. I mean, as he mentioned, this is actually stricter than Measure R in many ways against formula retail.
And just to be clear, like, if I, if I've got a complex that I'm managing that has less than ten thousand square feet, once one formula goes in that, as long as it's not longer than five hundred feet long, that would be the only one that that kind of complex would get. I mean, that's implied by your, by that change.
Well, Bonnie, can you interpret that? Is, or is that under the thirty percent rule?
It, I mean, it, it would, if there's a shopping center that's under ten thousand square feet, if you have one in there, it would, it would get one in that complex, pretty much, but I mean, that would still be over twenty-five percent of the complex, so it's close to the thirty percent limit as it is.
Now, I, I'd be willing to listen to an amendment if you thought maybe it should be three hundred feet. Okay, but I think that's, we're getting pretty small. You, do you want to, do you want to, and essentially, the only chains, I believe, that are going to go on Coast Highway are fast food. Maybe, maybe there's a chain of liquor stores or something like that. But I don't think there's a lot of uses for those small buildings, uh, for chains. Now, but that's, you know, that's up to discussion. This is something staff added. I'm trying to just make it more fair for, uh, the Hakim-type landlords that have units along the highway, uh, or the people that are near shopping centers. For example, Point Doom, essentially, they have a monopoly, if, if we didn't have this.
Because of the five hundred feet, as it's presently written.
Yeah.
Well, I, I- Sorry, I did have one other thought, just, um, if you look at, say, the Ralph's, Ralph's Shopping Center, and you go kind of to the Ralph's end of it, if all that's formula, exempt or non-exempt, but then the other end ends up being, you know, kind of more local and non-formula, is the five hundred foot defined off of, uh, just kind of where the actual formula is in that center or the entire center?
This is only outside of the shopping centers. If you're not a shopping center, you're covered by the five hundred rule. If you're in a shopping center, it doesn't matter.
We were anticipating that, that the distance would be measured from the tenant space.
Yeah, so I'll re-
As opposed to the property boundaries, is that your question?
Yeah, that's my question, so just to repeat it. So there's, uh, shopping plaza which is over ten thousand square feet, which has a Ralph's and a CVS, dominated by, uh, formula at that end of the complex. The other end, if it ends up going all non-formula, then the stores right across Malibu Road are over five hundred feet from-
No, no, what, what I'm saying, and number three is, if you're not in a shopping center, it doesn't matter what's in the shopping center. You are-
You're only measured against non-shopping centers.
Non-shopping centers, okay? So if there's, if, if rip curl is ten feet from your operation, and you're not in the shopping center, you're not covered.
I guess as far as the five hundred feet, I, I need to see a map and distances, I'm not good at that, I'll be honest.
Well, essentially, most-
I'm not good at five hundred feet, um, two football fields or something?
Oh, five hundred feet is, is five lots on Point Doom. They're usually a hundred feet lots, five residential lots.
Now, are those with, um, old California homes or big new ones?
Well, five hundred feet is five hundred feet, I don't know how else to describe it.
Ranch-style, okay.
Uh, I'll put it, uh, here's a good example. The, uh, the Malibu Beach Inn is two hundred and fifty-eight feet long.
Okay, that helps.
Okay? Now, number four I had was, and I, I talked to Christie a long time about this, she agreed there should be some transparency. But, yes, the lawyers in the room, can't be a CUP, we, we can't have anything to do with it, essentially, but we can review it. And so what I wrote here is something that would say, you got to report to us what you did, with the calculations and the reasoning, and we can ask you questions. It's, it's transparent. If you say, well, I decided McDonald's wasn't a, wasn't a chain, we might say, are you kidding me? But we can't turn it down, because that's illegal. Is that correct?
Yeah, so what you're talking about is including this, a reporting requirement, this isn't, this isn't an appeal, it's just a reporting requirement to the planning commission-
Right, and a noticing requirement.
To add transparency to the process, so if there is a mistake made, it could be caught.
Okay, now, um, is that clear?
Yeah, very clear.
Okay, now, I forgot, I want to amend, oh, you want to-
If it's, if it's caught, can you, it's already been approved, it doesn't make any difference, right?
If a permit was approved in error, it would be revocable.
Yeah, that'd be up to Bonnie, that'd be up to Bonnie, not us.
Okay.
But we would give opinion that would then, that Bonnie would then decide on?
We could ask questions, if Bonnie said, whoops, I made a mistake, she could revoke it. Okay, we can't.
Okay.
As I understand from Christie, we cannot touch it.
And that notice would go where, all, you know?
Well, it's noticed just like a, a consent item, the way I tried to write it.
So it would, so it would just be published on the agenda?
Well, whatever you have to do. It says, noticed and reported, noticed and reported, I could not find in our codes how we notice people.
But if, if we're to give these approvals in a couple of days, the notice is coming after the fact, that's okay, you just want to make sure it gets out in some timely manner after the decision is made.
Yeah, we want people to know about it. Now, I want to amend my motion to add one other thing. And, uh, I, there's some definitions that are missing. Part of the, the staff report's ordinance is, uh, you can switch from a coffee bean to a, whatever it is, based on land use category. And zero definition of land use category anywhere I can find.
That's right, and, um, actually, I meant to delete that from the staff report, we'll be bringing that later. But, what we have in mind is, um, creating a table similar to what's in the LCP that defines, um, all these categories of uses and then what's allowed in each zone.
Like it says, beauty shop, blah, 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 blah.
Exactly, bakery, liquor store.
Okay, yeah, do you think, my question would be, do we need to, to attach this, because this is an ordinance, do we need to say, define land use category, and you guys can fill in the blanks, or, or do we not put that in?
You could delete it.
Okay.
My, my question on that is, why does it matter? If it's a formula business, why do we care, what, how does the category matter? Like, the example I discussed with Bonnie is, instead of changing from coffee bean and change to LL Bean, what, 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 what are we doing there? Are we defining businesses by category now and limiting them by category?
It, it would just add an extra layer of review, when a, when a new business comes into a different use, it would require a planning clearance, this would also require a formula retail clearance, it's not necessary.
Well, it actually is necessary. And the reason is, we said, and the court said, it's not fair, like for like, coffee bean versus McDonald's. But, we're, our intention here is to eventually, over the next hundred years, come into balance. So every existing use today, you, you shouldn't be able to take a coffee bean and tea leaf and turn it into a dress shop, okay? Because that's grandfathered, okay? Whereas if you're a coffee bean and tea leaf, and you want to become a McDonald's, it's grandfathered, it's waived, it's the same use. Whereas if you change the use, it now comes under the formula retail. And that takes-
You lost me there.
Okay.
Well, I think what you're saying is that, under the way the ordinance is drafted, um, if you, if a coffee shop got a formula retail clearance, it could transfer that formula retail clearance to a subsequent food service tenant.
Right, or anything.
Yeah.
And not be counted in the thirty percent.
It's, no, not, that, that's not, it would, well, it would, it would have already been evaluated for the thirty percent.
Right, because it's, it's, it's a coffee shop. So this, this says, if you change the use, you have to be reevaluated, okay? Otherwise, everything that's there now never gets evaluated.
Okay, I'm still confused.
Okay, let me try again.
Let me, let me ask a question, okay. I'm coffee bean, or a Starbucks, and somebody new wants to come in, what's allowed to, to replace the Starbucks?
What's allowed to replace the Starbucks is the same use category, the same land use category.
So the problem that they're having is that the staff report indicates that there's going to be a table of uses that's going to be prepared, and, and we don't know what that table of uses is going to look like. It may be that the only thing that can replace a coffee shop is another coffee shop, or maybe a tea shop, but certainly not a liquor store. That we're going to have a table of, of uses that's going to be two hundred and thirty pages long, specifying the identical uses that can only, you know, that, this is, this is the direction you want to go, right?
No, this is, this is-
That's because you don't want th, these, these uses to be swapped, uh, even though they're, they're all formula retail uses. But it's, the, the guts of the thing is in that table, and how specific that table is going to be.
Okay, well-
And we don't know what that is.
From what I understand from the staff's report, it's the, essentially, the table at the end of the LIP. It lists every zone and every use allowed in those zones. It's the commercial section of that table, essentially.
Yeah, essentially, that's, that's what we were shooting for.
And that table's coastal commission table, uh, it's pretty broad, I mean-
Take me back, so the question, I got a Starbucks that wants to leave, a new tenant wants to come in under that permit, what can go in there?
What can go in there without a review by Bonnie?
Right, right.
Is the same use as the land use category. Okay?
Yeah, okay.
And if, if you take that out, it means anything, um, which means it's grandfathered, it never goes to Bonnie. So what you're saying, if you don't have this, every space that's occupied today by a formula retail will be occupied by a formula retail forever.
No.
No.
No, because, uh-
If she doesn't have to review it, it will.
No, because the businesses, the current existing formula retail, um, businesses don't have a formula retail clearance at this point, they need to get one if they expand or seize use.
If they expand or seize-
Yeah, then they would get a clearance, and then that would be transferable.
So, you're saying that coffee bean and tea leaf could not transfer to Starbucks today?
No, if, it could.
I think the court said you couldn't do that.
If it has, if, if your, if your Starbucks has a formula retail clearance, it would be able to transfer that to a, to a coffee bean.
But it doesn't.
Starbucks to coffee bean to-
But it doesn't.
Yeah, so if it doesn't-
You're saying if it doesn't have one right now?
Well, none of them do.
Okay, so if what, if you're talking about, you have a Starbucks existing today, so it's, right now it's exempt from having a formula retail clearance, and then you have-
And it's exempt under this current, the law we're contemplating, if it transfers to another coffee, or to another similar use.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have a, a clearance, so then if you have-
It doesn't have anything to transfer.
Yeah.
Well, it's exempt.
So you're saying that if a new business, if a new business moved in, they would have to go through a review?
Yes.
That's right.
Even though the, we're grandfathering the existing bus-
We're, we're not grandfathering them, they're just, they're not, they're not being required to, if you put it in right now, some shopping centers may be at sixty- If you put it in right now, some shopping centers may be at 60% chain stores, and they would have to seize operations immediately. It allows them to continue until they seize operation.
I get it.
So you were saying that, under the law, without this, you're going to review every single formula retail that exists today that doesn't have a formula retail clearance? Which is all of them.
Without that exemption?
Yeah.
Sorry, without that exemption?
Right.
Then you would, you would, the law would require you to go through each shopping mall and knock them all down to 30%.
And that's why I'm saying the exempt, this is a definition of that exemption. It has to be the same use, if you transfer.
I, I think the point that we're missing is that the, the, the existing businesses that are there now, the existing formula retail businesses that are there, don't have anything to transfer. They don't have any transferable right. What would happen is, so long as they continue to operate and don't try to expand and don't do anything else, if they go out of business and somebody else wants to come in, they have to get a formula retail clearance. That formula retail clearance is then transferable.
But now, when you look at what it can transfer to, looking at the retail uses in the LIP, you've got bookstores, convenience stores, food markets. Is it only like-for-like, or are we saying to anything formula within retail?
Bookstore for bookstore.
The idea of the use category was to keep it within, like bookstore to bookstore. But it's not necessary to keep the term use category in there if you wanted to just focus on the fact that it's just formula.
I have a question. One of the problems that the court had with the ordinance was that the non-transferability of, of conditional use permits. And by going to a formula retail clearance and calling it a formula retail clearance rather than a conditional use permit, wa- was that an effort to, to get around that difficulty that the court had? And, and if it was, is there a danger that if the categories are too narrow so as to effectively eliminate the transferability? In other words, if it has to be coffee shop replaced by a coffee shop, not a tea shop, and so on, aren't you running into the same problem that, that the court was addressing?
A couple of things on this. This would not be a conditional use permit. It wouldn't be a discretionary permit, like a conditional use permit is, doesn't run with the land. So this is a, just a standard ministerial permit. So that's, that's one part. In terms of the transferability, we don't have the issue because it wouldn't be a CUP in this situation. But if you want to eliminate the land use category, again, it's not required. It just adds an extra layer of review when a new business comes in. The purpose is to limit and make this simpler, to make it simpler to evaluate, to predict, and to apply.
So is your recommendation, will you, will you eliminate the land use category? Because that's what you guys put in there.
Yes, either way is fine. The, when that language was put in, there was going to be a land use table. Since it's not there, it probably makes sense to take it out for the time being. Or you could.
So transfer, I see, I, I assumed you put it in there because of this issue Jeff brought up about you can't stop a McDonald's from becoming a Jack-in-the-Box.
Yeah, so the, the land use category would be a broader category than was allowed under Measure R. Eliminating the land use category makes it even broader than that, in terms of transferability.
And you think that's better?
It would, it would address the, the court's criticism to a greater extent. But I think either would pass muster. It's, it's a decision for you.
But, but, okay, so if we have formula exempt, like grocery store or bank, could that transfer to formula non-exempt? I mean, just, is that theoretical? At least, should it be exempted?
Of course. You close, you close a, a, a supermarket, and you chop it up and put five businesses in it, they can all be non-exempt.
But, and they could all be formula.
If they pass, pass the, pass muster.
New businesses, new businesses would have to get a formula retail clearance, so they would be evaluated on the 30%.
But we're talking about transferring existing FRCs. So if there's an existing FRC on the exempt.
But the other part of the transferability is that it's the exact same tenant space. It hasn't gotten bigger or, or changed. So if.
Can it be split up, like John said?
If it got chopped up, then each of the individual things that went into the new, smaller spaces would have to come in and get a clearance.
Then I come back to, if I have a bank, and it's exempt, and then that converts to retail shopping, which is non-exempt, is, can it transfer in this discussion?
The, the bank doesn't have a formula retail clearance, it's exempt from having to get one.
So, this is not part of my motion, but do you think I should put, ask for a amended motion saying, delete the the land use category section? Is that what you're recommending? Ever? Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a policy decision for you. Either, either way is fine. It's whether you want that additional level of review.
Okay, I'll leave it in there then, I guess. So I'm going to make, make a motion that we leave it in there, and we define land use category with a table.
And the table would have similar level of detail towards the LIP? Is that kind of where we're headed, or going towards Jeff's 250 page?
I believe.
I have another question.
Mm-hmm.
The draft, the, the staff's draft talks about if in a shopping center issuing a clearance, if, if in a shopping center, issuing the clearance will not result in non-exempt formula retail establishments occupying more than 30% of the total gross floor area or leasable tenant spaces of a shopping center. Does the use of the word "or" mean you're trying to explain what you mean by total gross floor area? Are, are, are those two different measures? And if they're two different measures, are, do you have to meet both of them? Would you, just see if you can explain, no, I'm asking staff, not you, John. If you could just sort of explain what you mean by that.
Yeah, the, the idea is that those would, there would be two calculations to make. One would be 30% of the gross floor area, and one would be 30% of the number of tenant spaces.
And you have to meet them both in order to be able to get the clearance?
Right.
Okay, and so the difference in, in your motion then, John, the difference, the main difference, as I see it, is that you want that 30% to be calculated on each floor of the shopping center.
Correct. And I'll tell you why.
I didn't ask, but go ahead.
Okay. If you don't, if you don't want to know, I won't tell you.
No, 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 go ahead, why?
Okay. We, we looked at the two-story shopping centers when we did Measure R. And we said, get X amount of square feet. If you had a 20,000-square-foot building, 10,000 each floor, do you want to have the first floor be 60% formula retail, and the top floor zero? And we decided, no. You want it, you want to have the first floor, which is the main retail floor, be 30%. That's why that was put in there. So people didn't force mom and pops or those upstairs.
Then staff, you added, you, when you began the presentation, you added some language that you kind of brushed by, at least I didn't get it. But I take it that it had to do with the point that John is making in this motion, which is that, that the calculation has to be of those areas that, that don't, that, that, that uses that are exempt don't get counted into that calculation. In other words, John's, John is saying in this motion that the calculation of the 30% shall include the proposed formula retail establishment and all existing formula retail establishments, including the formula retail establishments described in paragraphs 1 through 9, right? Is, is that the same thing as you proposed in the brief amendment that you flashed on the screen when you started the presentation?
The amendment that we were proposing was not to include the, the existing, as of November 1, 2017, businesses as non-exempt for purposes of that 30% calculation. So those would get counted towards the overall formula retail that's in the shopping center already.
That it would be counted?
Yes.
Yeah, so basically, the, the currently existing would be calculated when you calculate out the 30% or the 500-feet scenario. Because the way it's calculated now, a, a bank or, or one of these previously established businesses are exempt from that calculation.
But you're.
Which, which is why you added the, the language you took.
Yeah, we'd actually suggest making a tweak to that language if you.
But you're still including the non-exempt as being not calculated. Or the exempt. So the reason I use.
I think exempt or calculated.
When I do the 30%, I mean, I'm going to count the exempt businesses in that 30%. Is that a correct statement?
The point is that the non-exempt don't constitute more than 30% of the shopping center.
But the exempt could. Okay, well, the way, the way, okay, I'll explain what I proposed.
What do they propose? I just want to know what they're just, what he just said.
Let me, let me see if I get this right, Bonnie. Your amendment is proposing counting, not counting the exempt, but counting the non-exempt that's already there. And what I'm proposing is, no, it's the whole shopping center, it's 30%.
Right.
Formula. All formula, exempt and non-exempt. And unless you, you do the formula that was in Measure R, which was debated and debated and debated when it was written, you can have 100% shopping centers. In fact, most likely, you will have 100% shopping centers.
With formula?
With formula.
So what was Bonnie proposing?
She was taking out the non-exempt, I believe.
Yeah, I thought it was the other way, so we had to get this right. So did I.
So.
Do we have a ruling?
It's like watching the World Series. The umpires are conferring.
Okay, so the, the, the intention was to leave out of the 30% calculation the, only the legally existing businesses as of November 1, 2017, not the entire list of exempt businesses.
And my question would be, over the long run.
I'm sorry, I think I said that backwards.
You said it backwards, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the ones that are existing as of November 1, 19, or 2017, is that right, 2017? Would be included in, you would have to consider those in your 30% evaluation. The rest of the list would be excluded.
And the reason why I had proposed, and proposing Measure R language is the scenario where, even if you counted those, you could still have 100% retail, formula retail shopping centers. In fact, most likely, you would always exceed 30%.
You're talking about it, in terms of exempt and non-exempt in a shopping center? It depends on how someone wants to set their business. It could. You could, you could have a, you could have a shopping center of all exempt formula retail under any scenario.
And I'll put it another way. Any shopping center that had an exempt use, it was formula retail exempt use, would be greater than 30%. 100% of them. Mathematically.
It depends on the shopping center.
Any shopping center that had an exempt formula retail use.
Not necessarily. I mean, if they had a, a small exempt formula retail use, and all the rest of the shopping center was non-chain, non-formular retail.
Mathematically, you've got 100%. You take any percent of that that is exempt formula retail out of the formula, you will always have, well, if you could always, could always have more than 30%.
Yeah, anytime you have an exempt, exempt formula retail, you'd be able to go over the 30% cap. But you're not, but your non-exempt part would always be capped at 30%.
Yes, which could be zero. That's why it's written the way it is. I don't want to open this up.
I have a really good idea what you want to say. Kind of not going to open up public comment right now. I mean, this is going to city council, so.
Obviously.
I got it. But thank you.
Well, I could call a question unless you have other, other questions.
Well, I, I definitely have a few points I want to go over. I'm sure other people do, too.
Go for it.
Well, let's see, Jeff?
Are we talking just about John's motion?
Hmm? Okay, so you want, just do your motion, then move on to other things? Is that your proposal?
Well, I think if you have any questions that would.
On your motion, I don't.
Cause, cause addition or subtraction? We could, we could consider it. I, I would think that.
I, I understand your motions. I understand your motions now. I have other points, maybe not related to your motion, that's all.
But would you like them included in this motion?
Uh, I'll, I don't know, I'll bring, uh, we can discuss more. So we can hold on yours and go on?
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Steve, what do you have?
I just, you know, in, in terms of the motion where it sits, look, I think the last Measure R election, where 60% of the people came out and voted, they told us they wanted a strong formula retail ordinance in place. And I think they said it loud and clear. I think, you know, the fact that that one didn't make it because of the courts was unfortunate. But I think we've got a chance to sort of fix that, and I think we should take that and do it.
Jeff? Anything? Chris?
Yeah, so I just want to get a little input. There was a lot of kind of back and forth about whether or not we're treading on shaky legal ground. Any guidance on that? Like, should we, in considering our decision, should we keep any of those factors in mind, or focus just on really more kind of what Steve brought up, which is what, kind of the, 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 will the people more appears to be? You know, I'm just not sure what the guidance is on what to consider in the, in the vote.
Is there a particular provision you're concerned about? I mean, I don't want to get too far into the legality. I mean, the idea behind drafting this is to address the concerns made by the court and what's put forward here.
Well, all, all I call out is just what came up in public comment from, you know, indirect and direct kind of statements as to what could happen if this is voted through. I don't know, you know, should we consider that? Or do we just look at how things are written and try to, you know, give our best opinion on what we feel is, is kind of best for the community?
I mean, there's, there's always risks in a formula retail ordinance. There, there isn't a lot of case law on these. This one is designed to avoid a number of the, the different legal issues you could, you could fall into. The changes, you know, that are suggested here, I don't, I don't think that there is a, a strong difference legally in, in doing them or not doing it. It's more of a policy choice about, you know, how simply one's to apply, you know, how you wanted to apply to particular situations. It's sort of in your court about, you know, what shape you want the ordinance to take.
Then, just kind of looking at other questions which kind of were pointed out while people were talking, I, I, I just was curious, I don't know who could address this, maybe someone else from staff, but there was a comment about this being close to, say, Ojai, for example? Like, is this pretty close to the approach? Or any, any thoughts or comments on that? Just wanted to understand that better.
Ojai bans all formula retail. 100%.
Okay, and then some other comments that were made. Norman brought it up along with one or two others, just that the 10 or 11 stores, you know, worldwide. Any thoughts on updating language there? I mean, it seemed like there were some good thoughts on that one.
Could I comment?
Yeah, of course.
Unless somebody else wants to.
No, go ahead, John.
We addressed that when we studied Measure R because a certain number of stores were coming in that were super high-end, Vogue magazine, European fancy fashion. And we assumed, we, we put that in because we didn't think it was fair, number one, number one, for a U.S. fancy fashion to compete with a Prada or something even more exotic than a Prada, and them being exempt. And because Malibu was trending towards ritzy, ritzy, ritzy instead of local government, local stores, we wanted to have those considered. That's why we did that.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I, yeah, I mean, it was, we spent a lot of time before. We spent a ton of time. And I have to agree with Steve, no matter what really any of our feelings are, we know how the vote went. Clearly, I mean, I have, Malibu spoke on what they wanted. And I think you made a really good point there. And to, and I want to address Norm's comment, which was, I think it was a good one. The chocolate one's a great comment. I mean, I would hope there'd be a retailer that would bring those chocolates in that isn't, has the store. I mean, your point's valid. I mean, yeah.
You know, and I don't, I'd like to eat the chocolates also. And I'm just wondering, you know, somebody, and I don't know who mentioned it, appeal process. All right? Now, I understand John's comment that says, you know, you don't want one fancy dress shop that, but if something unique does come rolling down the road, I'd hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater if the, so I don't know, I mean, is there, how, if the appeal process were to take place, is, is it something that the planning commission could participate in? Or does that, I don't know.
Could I, could I?
Think about it.
Make a comment? I spent a lot of time on the phone with Christie today making sure that none of this was going to be counter to what the court said. And her opinion was that we cannot have anything to do with it. Period. Now Bonnie can. Okay, but we can't. But she agreed that we could have transparency. We could ask questions, but we cannot make that decision.
And let me think about maybe if it's the client, city council, we can figure out some way to, if something's really unique, take advantage of it.
Are we, where are we? Are we in the process of ruling on John's, voting on John's motion? Or are we discussing the ordinance generally now?
I would say both.
It feels like a little of both.
All right, in that case, I want to direct staff's attention or invite staff's attention to Mr. Anone's comments about the definition of formula retail. And I agree that, that the use of service mark or trademark creates some ambiguities that, that really ought to be thought about. For example, you know, one of the things he suggested is, yeah, that the, the idea of formula retail is designed to protect the viewer from formula retail. And we don't want the sense of sameness. If somebody has a trademark or a service mark that they use on their letterhead and nobody sees it except, you know, because it's not on the signage, then it seems to me to be irrelevant. And his point was to make it a standardized signage, having a trademark or, or service mark be involved in the signage, like, say, H&R Block, you know, with a service mark, then that makes sense. But if it's just a, if it's a service mark that's just used internally, it doesn't make sense to have that count as a, as a, as a criterion for.
So you're saying define between outdoors and indoors, or, or?
I'm saying, no, I'm saying, you know, because indoors, it could possibly be something indoors. But I'm saying it's just, he, he raised some points about that, that I think staff ought to take a look at it before it gets to the city council.
The, the proposed change was to number six and would instead read standardized exterior signage, including a service mark or a trademark as signage. No, you did not include that change. Do you want that change? That change is in.
It was brought up by a public speaker.
Yeah, it's in Mr. Anone's.
The very definition of formula retail is walking into a mall and seeing the Gap. Okay? And if the Gap, the Gap's the Gap. If they have a different name and 51 percent of the merchandise, it's not a formula retail. This is two of. Okay? But if it says the Gap, it's the Gap. And that's the whole purpose. That is the main key on identifying formula retail. Once you eliminate that, you can play all kinds of games.
I think that's what he, I think that's the point he was trying to make, is that if you see the Gap, then the Gap is the service or the trademark, in that case, that's posted on the sign that says Gap. That's the point he was trying to make. And the point I was trying to direct your attention.
I think the concern was that if they have all the merchandise in the store also labeled the Gap, you don't want to count that in addition to what's on the signage on outside. I think that's what he said, right?
If more than 49, or 51 percent of it is different, it's moot. If it's all the same, it's still the Gap.
Okay, so you're saying despite what?
Testing is this, if, if the front sign outside said Gapperuni, but inside, all the material was labeled as Gap, that would.
No, I'm saying whatever, whatever we're using in Measure R to determine those different criterias, a lot of them shouldn't be my turn to start.
Mike?
The draft ordinance doesn't include anything about 51 percent.
Well, it does on if you're, want an extra thousand square feet.
Yes, that part does. Just wanted to be clear that we were looking at the same thing.
Well, I think it's an interesting point, whether we rule on it or not. It's, I, I, that definition, I, I see both sides.
Well, it's something that was a challenge in the.
Okay.
There was one other one that caught my, there's a specific reference to 200 square feet. It seemed like, you know, should that be a percentage of floor space? I'm trying to find where it was, but, um. Yeah, yeah, when you, it's on page three, five, seven.
That was a different, different thing Norm was talking about.
Oh, no, no, I just mean in terms of what's written here. On page five of seven in 61.020A, it says if they expand by 200 feet or more, if you've got an 8,000 square foot shop.
That was the trigger. That was the trigger in Measure R. You can stay the same yard. The minute you start getting bigger, you got to get looked at again. That's all that is. Now, if you had a, you know, a 30,000 square foot building or a formula retail, and you wanted to add 20 percent, it's a lot. So we had a, we had a trigger, 200 square feet. And then you get re-reviewed. It could say if you expand it all. Okay, but that was put in there to little tweaks.
Okay.
They could do a little tweak.
All right.
I want to ask some qualifying questions. And some of them are the same as last time we went through this, just to make sure we lie. And I went over some of them with Bonnie, but I want to bring up some examples to make sure we're at. Sun Life, when it started in Malibu, was not a chain. And now apparently has more than 10 locations, so it is a chain. So I assume, obviously, now's scenario is a chain because there's more than 10, once this starts correct. But if we have another something like that start, what, I want to make sure what happens in the middle. So it's not a chain when this rule starts, but then becomes one three years down the line. Does that switches the designation of that location? From non-chain to exempt chain?
They are, as I understand it, you correct me if I'm wrong, they have a permit. They're, they're there. You can't do anything unless they move.
Right, so they go from not being a chain to being an exempt chain.
Yeah, and, well, no, they're being one that has a formula retail clearance or whatever. Does it have a formula retail clearance, but it's there? If it wants to move.
That's different.
It's, it's now a chain.
Jeff Pearson, so in your situation, a, a non-chain comes in, it doesn't need a formula retail clearance, it later becomes a chain, they would not need to get a clearance until they relocate or expand by 200 square feet. But at, at that point, they would be treated that way. Also, it would start counting towards the 30 percent.
That's what I was going, so, so they start.
As soon as they go over that limit, then they would.
They count towards the 30 percent. Okay, that, that I want to do.
There was also a proposal by Mr. Anone about that. He had wanted to add an exemption to, that would say retail establishments that were not formula retail of the original lease date for as long as the business is in operation. So it would keep, you would keep your exemption in perpetuity if you were, if you were not a chain store at the time that you were established.
And that's true, except until you move.
His proposed change would keep that as exempt.
Right, so the situation there, just, just, just trying to think down the road how this executes. So you have eight stores. You want to put your eighth in Malibu. That landlord's probably going to be like, hmm, that's gonna, that's gonna be problematic for me five years from now, or something like that. That's just how I see that playing out a little bit. Okay, just want to, trying to think of the what-ifs in this, because nothing stays the same. Another, another what-if. I'm terrible at guessing square footage, but I want to use Urban Outfitters as an example. If that business, if it's over 10,000, let's just say it's 10,200 square feet, that building. And they leave. So then that means the next store that come in can only be 25 to potentially 3,500 square feet, depending on the product mix, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If they're 9,000 square feet in that building now.
Then they're under the non-shopping center rule. They have to look 500 feet away.
Except they're already there now.
Non-shopping center, they're, well, you said they left.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay. And then I want to run by the salvation one. So salvation was an experiment by Nike. It was very successful in Malibu for a while there. It was owned by Nike, but it wasn't a Nike store. It was, there was two salvations in the whole world. We still treat that as a non-formula store?
Correct.
Because in essence, we're trying to promote, if you are a big corporation with lots of stores, to do something totally unique in Malibu if you want to come here.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the, the right same wavelength and all this. Okay. Okay, and I had the same question on a potential appeal process, but I have no idea how that would work. I think it's. Didn't contemplate it.
Well, actually.
The, the purpose is to be a ministerial permit that wouldn't be subject to appeal instead of a discretionary permit.
Yeah, they did contemplate it directly, yeah.
And another.
Second, isn't the, aren't the provisions in the municipal code that say that any action of staff is appealable by any aggrieved party to the, to the city council or to the planning commission? Isn't there something in the code that says that? And as a matter of fact, I don't think there's anything that we've ever put in the, in law that says that staff has the final say on any decision. There's always a possibility of an aggrieved party taking an appeal. I can't think of any example where that's not the case.
Well, Jeff, I spent an hour today going through the municipal code trying to find anything about appeals in the municipal code, which is, this is a municipal code thing. I couldn't find anything. I called up Bonnie and said, is there anything, you know, that, that I could put in the language? And there, it's not there.
Maybe it was Paul, now he's left. Oh, there you are, you moved back. Or somebody brought up that on the 50 percent rule to get 35, another thousand square feet, that was a good question. Is it, what is it that, what brings it over? Is it the, the marking on the item, the retail value of the item, the number of items? What makes that difference? And I don't know that we've defined that here. I don't, I don't know what it is. Because I'm guessing that might, you know, there's always, there's always that outlier there. And if that, if that's gray, that might not be great if we leave that just totally gray and nobody knows exactly what that is.
I did ask, I didn't see a reason for that provision. That extra thousand square feet, et cetera. So I did ask Christie why it was there. And can I say?
Sure what you're going to say.
Okay, well, you stop me. You stop me if I'm, I'm saying something wrong.
I don't want you to share anything attorney-client privilege.
She said it was there because it allowed variance in what's approved and it wasn't cut and dried.
Yeah, the purpose is, is it flows in with the rest of the ordinance in terms of the purpose of this is to create something unique in Malibu. And it also emphasizes and provides additional motivation to provide a unique store in Malibu.
Yeah, and the reason I, you know, his point is somewhat taken, but we have not gone through details of everything that Bonnie has to consider. She should be able, I believe, to walk into a store and say, this doesn't look like 50 percent.
But 50 percent of what?
Instead of having to value each item.
No, I just think we should define what that means, that's all.
I mean, for example, John, does it mean that I can take, I'm a shoe store, I just put the name Malibu in front of each one of the shoes I sell? No, I'm unique to Malibu.
The way I would look at that is, you, you embroider the shoes Malibu? They're different.
Or I'm a T-shirt shop, but I bring in a bunch of expensive surfboards that are worth more than the T-shirts. So my, which side of 50 percent am I on? And the surfboards are made by different manufacturers.
And then this, Trevor, you tell me if I'm wrong. We have given a fair amount of discretion to Bonnie to determine a lot of these things because she's the one making the decision. And do we really need to say, don't value the surfboards, value the shoes and all this stuff?
The way it's written, units or dollars, or that's all.
I mean, the, the way it's listed right now is over half its goods, services, and menu. So that would be the physical goods, you know, rather than the value, is how it's written right now. If you prefer it in terms of value, you can make that adjustment.
I know, where, I just wanted to bring it up. I think it's an interesting question, that's all. Because it changes potentially how people might set up their business. I mean, in my, in my surfboard store, the surfboards took up far less room than the rest of it and were worth more money. So just, that was an easy one for me to think of.
Let me ask you this. If you had a store that was 90 percent Zuma J, and you had one board by Laird that cost a million dollars. Is that?
I'd hope to sell it.
Yeah. But that's, that's where it's going to be, you know, almost impossible to do other than the way it's written. Because you could always jack the prices.
I just want to make, I just want to make sure we don't leave it. Okay, I'm, I'm pretty ready.
Me, I'm ready to vote.
I, I have one more item? My last item, I think was Norm's, was on what about buildings that are right at the threshold, but not quite? What about that 2,800 square foot building? That could be bizarre down the line a little bit. How, do we?
But how do you, how do you ever do that? So the question is.
I have no idea, I don't.
You know, you, every building is a different size. The question is, you got a 2,800? Maybe you, you do two 14s or one, 1,000 and, you know, 118 or whatever. Unless you have a bright line where she can decide, we can't have a scale for each size of building.
I, I get it. I just, I thought it was an interesting issue that, hey, it'll happen.
Commissioner Jennings, Chair Pearson, I did find something in the code dealing with your question about appeals of action. And it says, this is related to the zoning code. Any person aggrieved by a decision or any portion of a decision made by the planning director under the provisions of this title in connection with a site plan review, variance, string line mod, conditional use permit, determination of permitted use, and a few other things, may appeal such action to the planning commission, and then that could be appealed to the city council, so.
Those are all discretionary decisions.
They're all discretionary decisions that are, they're just specifically called out.
Trevor, could I ask you a question? Should we, in this ordinance and this ordinance only, exempt that section?
You wouldn't need to, because it's already specific to, it only allows appeals for specific types of entitlements.
Okay. Well, Jeff could leave, I call a question.
Let's call the question. We're probably going to need to repeat it at this point.
Let's go through it.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I reread it?
See if we have it here. So the, it's staff's recommendation, except you want to swap out the definition of shopping center with what you've attached here as the dot, as the modified shopping center definition from Measure R.
So that's page five of seven, swapping that shopping center definition from Measure R.
With the.
As you, as you written it on this, this attachment here, says this adds this definition is for purposes of section 17.61 only.
Correct, that's the language you had.
Yep. The next change was to, on page six of seven, replace 17.61030B with page one of your attachment, which reads, approval of a proposed retail establishment will not result in formula retail establishments occupying more than 30 percent. will not result in formula retail establishments occupying more than thirty percent of, A, the overall gross square footage area of each floor of a shopping center, B, the total number of leasable tenant spaces of each floor of a shopping center, and C, the total gross floor area of a parcel or shopping center. The calculation of the thirty percent limit pursuant to this paragraph shall include the proposed formula retail establishment and all existing formula retail establishments, including the formula retail establishments described in paragraphs one through nine, inclusive of section seventeen point six one oh two oh.
Correct.
Next, you wanted to add to seventeen point six one oh three oh C, at the very end of the sentence, to say not located in a shopping center.
Correct.
Next, same section to add letter D, says all formula retail clearances issued by the planning director shall be reported to the planning commission within thirty days of issuance, and all information used to calculate, the decision shall be included. I didn't catch the last part, is that correct?
Okay, first, shall be, let me read it again, because you left off one word, all formula retail clearances approved by the planning commissioner issued, whatever is the right term.
Approved by the planning director?
Yeah, planning director, shall be noticed and reported to the planning commission within thirty days, and that number is, is that normal, Bonnie, or?
Um, yeah, I think that, that's probably, well, I don't know if it's normal, but it's, I think it's feasible.
Okay, so, uh, such reports shall include all calculations, descriptions of business, descriptions of business used, that were used in make this determination.
Did you catch all that?
You just, you basically want to see the math, you want to see the analysis used to make the determination?
Yeah.
Okay.
Such report, reports shall include, can you?
Calculations used in arriving.
All calculations.
And descriptions, in other words.
And descriptions.
You know, a shoe store, or whatever it is.
Used in making the decision, is that?
In making such determination.
Okay.
And then that's, that was it, right? Because we decided not to change the land use category.
And did you want to include staff's recommended change?
Remind me.
So the way it would be proposed to say is, on page five of seven, category, exempt, seventeen point six one oh two oh nine, would add a sentence saying, this category of exemption shall be non-exempt formula retail for the purposes of seventeen point six one oh three oh B and C.
Meaning included in the thirty percent calculation.
Yes, and in the five hundred foot determination.
I'm confused, why are you adding that?
That basically means that existing, so basically if you have a, what would count now as a non-exempt formula retail business, but it's exempt from having to get a permit pursuant to number nine, it would still be calculated as part of the thirty percent, otherwise.
That's included in my description. It says, the, the calculation of the thirty percent limit pursuant to this paragraph B shall be proposed formula retail establishment, all existing formula retail establishments, including formula retail establishment described in paragraphs one through nine.
Yep, you're, you're right, it should, it should only be applied to section C, which is the five hundred foot rule, instead of B.
No, it's applied to everybody.
Because, no, because you, basically, if you don't make this change, under letter C, you could be, if you have an existing non-exempt formula retail business, you could put another one next to it, it wouldn't be calculated as part, in terms of determining the five hundred feet.
Tell me again why anybody would determine percentages.
It's on, it wouldn't be for, since you made your change to letter B, we should only make this change to letter C, which is the five hundred feet limitation. You don't need to make it, it's, it's just a suggestion.
Okay, I'm still totally confused. Why is it necessary if, if the replacement for D includes that language?
You mean the replacement for B?
B, yeah, I'm sorry.
Because B only deals with the thirty percent of a shopping center, C deals with spreading out the businesses five hundred feet apart. So, and everyone that gets, once you get a non-exempt formula retail clearance.
Okay, I, if you agree, Steve, I'll amend it to include that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
So, Steve, you agree with, with the way it was read?
Yep.
And do you agree on all the items as a second?
One question, though. We, we did have conversation about the categories, what was their determination on that? We'd keep the language related to categories in and see a table to be determined?
No, we, we decided not to do that, correct?
Where was that? Where was that amended?
What you're looking at is seventeen six one oh four oh, the first sentence, whether you want to keep it transferable, it has to be, whether it has to be in the same land use category, and add on a land use table, or strike in the same land use category. Which way did you want to go on your motion, John?
Well, you're recommending we have, we don't have the table, is that correct?
You, you had said you wanted the table, but it still has to be defined, so we'd have to add some language thing to add the table.
Well, I can't define the table, Bonnie's going to make it up.
Yeah, so this is going to be the planning commission's recommendation, so your recommendation would be to keep this, and then recommend they add a land use table.
Is that okay with you, Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and we, and we, did we keep it at five hundred feet? We kind of talked about it and never.
I didn't hear much opinion.
Let city council deal with that?
Yeah, it sounds like a reasonable number staff came up with.
All right, so the motion's on the table, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Vice Chair Marx?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm over your turn.
Second.
His motion included the staff's recommendation, too.
Ah, I see, all right.
It's the staff's recommendation with those changes.
Yeah, it was, it was the staff's recommendation, too.
Okay.
I want to make sure you got all those questions. Okay.
You have this, too, right?
Yes. That should be framed and put on your wall, because that's the thing.
Oh, that's cool.
He launched in with this, I'm like, wow, I have no idea what he's talking about.
I wonder where that came from, I was like.